Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. It's great to be with all of you this evening. I am pleased to see such a large number of local residents, local stakeholders, elected officials. Right now, our numbers, we anticipate up to 100 plus on the even, on the screen with us this evening. So we know it's only 6:05. So everyone is jumping on. Today's agenda will introduce who we are, why we're here today, and why your voice matters. You may be nervous about speaking here tonight, but let me put you at ease by saying your voice matters. Your voice is important to us. I will now ask my sister commissioners to all. Ellen, can we stop sharing so we can do, have everybody on the screen? So I can have all of the sister commissioners kind of wave and say, here I am, okay? We're in gallery view. So all of the state and the regional commissioners, can you wave your hands? Thank you so much. I'd also like to welcome our regional commissioners, our Commissioner Meritah. I saw a few of you here. And all of our public servants from across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If you don't mind dropping your name into the chat and put Ameritah or put staff to an elected or something in your name also, so that way we'll be able to acknowledge you. We do know that Senator Lovely is going to be online with us this evening. State Representative David Viera out of the Cape area is supposed to be here with us. We also have Vanessa Baker, who is a DC legislative correspondent to a US Rep. Trey Hand and Bonnie Berkowitz, who is also with Senator Tar's office, Chief of, Chair of the Medical Policy and Strategy Committee. Thank you. I am pleased as such, as I said, I'm pleased about the large group of people that are here with us tonight for this virtual public hearing centering on issues related to women's health care. We do four hearings every year, but this year we decided we wanted to be focused and structured on a couple of our hearings. And women's health care is something that is important to us. We'll be moving quickly this evening. So please be sure that we have your contact information so we can follow up with you. If you have written testimony, please email it to us also. We hope you share it with us during the eve, during the, during the hearing or after the hearing, whichever way you can feel comfortable sending it to us, right? And again, thank you for being here with us. The MCSW was legislative created in 1998 as an independent state agency seeking to advance equality for women across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to promote their rights and their opportunities. The commission consists of 19 volunteer commissioners who are appointed by the governor, the Senate President, Speaker of the House, Representatives, Speaker of the House of Representatives and the Caucus of Women Legislators. Together, our purpose to provide permanent effective voice for women throughout Massachusetts. Our mission is to study and report on the status of women in the Commonwealth. We are charged with advising executive and legislative bodies on the effect of proposed legislation on women and girls in the Commonwealth. In short, the stories and issues we hear from you, we share directly with our legislative bodies. We fight to elevate our most pressing issues in real time. But we can't do this work without all of you. That's why we're here this evening. The MCSW seeks your input as we work toward advancing the status of women across the Commonwealth. After today's event, we'll be circulating a survey, and we hope you take the opportunity to share your voice and feedback with us. Now on to my vice chair, Christine Monska.
Christine, we can't hear you.
Christine, did you go to interpretation and select English? Go to the bottom where it says more. Click on interpreter, interpretation, and then select English.
I thought the meeting was over at six.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Sorry about that, folks. I'm here in my office with the Women's Fund South Coast with our partners, the Association for Relief of Age Limitation. My apologies for that delay here. My name's Christine Monska. I'm Vice Chair of the Mass Commission on the Status of Women and I'm here to tell you why this matters. To fulfill our mission, the commission conducts regional public hearings across the state to collect testimony and opinions on women's issues and concerns. The MCSW's charter is clear. We exist to empower the women of the Commonwealth. We are the bridge between the issues you face and the decision makers who have the ability to change, alter, or prioritize policy changes to make our lives easier. In the past, our hearings have brought attention to issues such as economic independence and self-sufficiency, domestic violence, and access to education and resources that support women and their families and more. Testimonies gathered at public hearings directly inform the commission's legislative agenda and policy priorities we advocate for year round. So thank you so much for being here and sharing your stories.
Thank you. My name is Kamal T. Carvalho. I am Chair of Legislative and Public Policy Committee. Our public hearings provide safe and open space for all women in their communities to be heard and to share the lived experience and the issues that impact their daily lives. Any subjects surrounding issues that women face or obstacles that hinder the ability for all women to experience equity are welcome topics. The purpose of public testimony is to gather facts and hear from the general public. Sometimes we host open topic hearings and sometimes we host issue-specific events. This evening's virtual hearing is focusing on the impact to women's health issues. And we encourage you to keep your testimony on topic to help us better for data and stories. This hearing is a public meeting and an opportunity to be yourself, to find others like you, and to share your story in a way that will positively influence the work that we do. The MCSW works to create change in the lives of women, and your public testimony guides our policy and advocacy platform.
Oh, good evening. I'm Audrey Hall, also Commissioner. And I just, you heard us just mention public testimony. So you might say to yourself, what exactly is public testimony? It's when you or any member of the general public wants to tell us what you know. You know, what, what issues are critical to you? Are you having issues that you feel need some attention and some support and some resources? We want to hear about it so that we can prioritize legislation to increase tax credits or care employees more, whatever it is, even if it's childcare, healthcare, whatever the issues are. Please let us know. And we'll be calling on the testifiers as they registered in that order. So please listen for your name, identify yourself and where you live at the very top of your remarks. Let us know who you are, where you're from. And we're going to be utilizing a timer this evening because, of course, we want to make sure that everyone can participate and that everyone has equal amounts of time to communicate and to testify. And remember that when you are not testifying and you're just listening tonight, to please mute your microphone if you're not speaking to help show respect for your fellow participants and make sure that they have no interruptions when they are speaking. And if you didn't previously register to testify, but that's okay. If you want to speak, feel free to go into the chat and chat any member of the MCSW staff, letting them know that you want to testify. And afterwards, we encourage all in attendance to share their testimony with us in writing. We really encourage you to do that. It helps inform our work going forward. And of course, if we run out of time, please email us. And now I'm going to hand it over to my sister Commissioner, Dr. Kim Shea. Kim?
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here today, not only as a healthcare professional, but as someone deeply invested in the well-being of our communities. My name is Kim Shea, and I have the privilege of serving as a commissioner for the status of, on women in Massachusetts appointed by the Caucus of Women Legislators. I am also the Dean of Nursing and Health Sciences for a community college in Massachusetts. As a registered nurse in the Commonwealth and someone who holds a doctorate in nursing practice with a specific focus on nursing education, I bring both professional and personal perspectives to this, to today's discussion. I'm proud to be a mother, a wife, and a resident of North Central Massachusetts, which is the northern region of Worcester County. This is home to me, and like so many of you, I am committed to building a healthier, more equitable future for all that live here. Massachusetts is a national leader in healthcare and education, yet we face real challenges that demand our immediate attention. Today, I'd like to address several of those pressing issues, including healthcare access, hospital closures, preventative care, workforce shortages, and the social determinants of health that affect so many of our residents. Massachusetts is proud to have one of the highest rates of health insurance coverage in the nation, a reflection of our commitment to ensuring that healthcare is a right and not a privilege. But coverage is just one part of the equation. Access to high-quality, affordable care remains uneven, especially in underserved communities. From urban centers to rural towns, we must address systemic inequities to prevent too many residents from receiving, that, that prevent too many residents from receiving timely and effective care. One of the most alarming trends in our healthcare system is the recent closure of hospital and hospital-based services, particularly serving folks in rural and economically disadvantaged areas. These closures not only limit access to essential services, but also destabilize the communities that depend on them for jobs and emergency care. When hospitals and other healthcare services close, the ripple effects are far-reaching, forcing patients to travel long distances for care, straining neighborhood facilities, and leaving many with limited options for treatment. This is particularly the case in emergent situations where time is of the essence. To counter this, we must work together to secure sustainable funding for our hospitals, incentivize providers to serve in high-need areas, and explore innovative care delivery models such as telehealth and mobile clinics to ensure that no community is left behind. A healthy community depends on more than just hospitals and clinics, though. It also depends on access to basic resources like transportation and nutritious food. For many residents in rural Massachusetts, particularly in the area that I live in, the lack of reliable transportation creates significant barriers to accessing healthcare. Whether it's missing a routine checkup, a vaccination, or an urgent procedure, the inability to reach a care provider can lead to worse health outcomes and higher rates of preventable illnesses. Similarly, access to healthy food remains a critical challenge. Food desert areas, where affordable nutritious options are limited, are not just a problem for cities. In rural Massachusetts, the lack of grocery stores and fresh produce impacts families' ability to maintain a balanced diet. This contributes to higher rates of obesity, diabetes, and heart disease, especially in communities where poverty compounds these issues. To improve our overall population health, we must invest in practical solutions, expanding public transportation networks, creating mobile health units, and supporting initiatives like farmers' markets and food delivery programs. When we remove these barriers, we empower communities to lead healthier, more productive lives. Preventative care is the bedrock of a healthy society, yet too many Massachusetts residents lack access to screenings, immunizations, and early interventions that can stave off more serious conditions. Addressing barriers like cost, transportation, and the cultural competency of healthcare providers are key to improving outcomes. By investing in more and increasing public health nursing, community health centers, and outreach programs, we can bring preventative services closer to those that need them most. Partnering with schools, employers, and local organizations will help ensure that every resident, regardless of income or zip code, has the access to the tools that they need to stay healthy. Mental health is health. And yet, access to mental health services remains a big challenge for too many Massachusetts residents. The stigma surrounding mental illness, coupled with a shortage of providers and inpatient beds, leaves many people waiting for, waiting months for care or receiving no care at all. To address this, we must integrate mental health services into primary care settings, expand telehealth options, and support initiatives that bring mental health care into schools and workplaces as the norm, not the exception. It's also vital to ensure that mental health services are plentiful, culturally competent, and accessible to populations who have historically faced barriers to care and have been marginalized. The nursing profession is considered the backbone of our healthcare system, yet we're facing a severe shortage of these essential workers. The pandemic highlighted the strain on our nurses, many of whom are now leaving the profession due to burnout, low wages, and unsafe working conditions. Massachusetts needs to act swiftly to recruit, retain, and support our nursing workforce. This includes expanding scholarships and loan forgiveness programs, increasing wages, and ensuring that nurses have the resources they need to do their jobs safely. We also need to invest in the training programs that attract diverse candidates as we prepare them to meet complex demands of modern healthcare. A key challenge in maintaining Massachusetts leadership in healthcare and healthcare education is the hiring of faculty at competitive wages, particularly from clinical practice. Experienced clinicians who bring invaluable, real-world experience to the classrooms often face a significant pay cut when transitioning to academia. This creates a recruitment gap that threatens the pipeline of well-trained healthcare professionals. We see this in all of our healthcare-related programs. To address this, we need to reimagine how we value faculty. Competitive wages, flexible contracts, and opportunities to maintain clinical practice alongside teaching could make academic roles more attractive. Additionally, partnerships between academic institutions and healthcare organizations can create dual roles that leverage expertise while easing financial constraints. If we fail to address this issue, we're losing the very individuals who inspire and prepare the next generation of nurses, doctors, and healthcare leaders.
Thank you, Sister, for your testimony. That is powerful. And we hope that you'll be able to send that in written also to us, right? Thank you, everyone, paying attention to time. A little bit more housekeeping logistics. And also, for those that just logged in, please go to the button where it says more. Go to interpreter, interpretation. Click on interpretation and select a language so that way you'll be able to hear everyone appropriately. Also, if you feel that you need to speak to one of the staffers on a personal issue, please drop into the chat. Need to, need to speak to MCSW staff, and they will direct message you. We also want to talk about the timer. Ellen, can we do, will we show a sample of the timer? There's a little timer system that will be on screen as you're testifying, and it would clock your, your time. It'll, it'll be, it'll be green, then it goes yellow to let you know you're getting close, and then red to let you know that you're at the end of your time. And we do appreciate your support and working with us on the time length. Now, we'd like to start with our testimonies. And if you are here and you did not register to testify, you can also drop into the chat that you would love to testify, and they will, we will get you. So the first person that we have on our list is Pauline Kiran. Pauline Kiran?
Thank you so much, and I'm thrilled to be first. I expected I would be number one, 100 at this hearing. I'm from Greater Boston Legal Services, and I work at the Corey and Reentry Project. And the reason why I'm here to testify this evening is when we're talking about public health and we're talking about women, it's important not to forget about women who are incarcerated or previously served time or are criminalized survivors of abuse because there are so many people who were also trafficked and sometimes also are coerced into committing criminal offenses because of their abusive relationships or end up being involved in the criminal legal system as a way of self-medicating or using drugs. So there's a lot of intersectionality between domestic violence, trafficking, abuse, and the criminal justice system. In my work, I help people seal criminal records. And it's, it's really important to think about the implications for people who've been abused. So I'm, I'm here to make a pitch that this commission support a bill that will get refiled next sex, next session. There was a bill that was filed to basically allow people who are trafficked or who are coerced into committing crimes or pressured or in that situation to allow them to immediately seal those records without any kind of waiting period or even expunge them if they choose to expunge their records. And maybe some situations where if somebody is undocumented or an immigrant, they may not want to expunge the record, but there should be some relief available. We also have a current law which allows people who are survivors of abuse and this kind of coercion to vacate some convictions, but it's really overly narrow. It's basically low-level drug possession and prostitution. It really doesn't represent the type of victimization that happens and just the extent and the range of survivors who are out there. I don't think I probably need to tell this group, but if you have any kind of criminal record and you want to be a nurse or you want to get a job, it's really, you know, it, it's, it's an albatross. It's something that's going to prevent you from getting employment. And you know, you know, you'll never get a job in early education and care. So it matters whether you can seal your record and also how quickly you can seal your record. And then my second pitch, and I, like I said, I'm mindful of time. So I'm going to go through this quickly, is to also ask this body to endorse the clean slate legislation that is also was sent to study and would automate the record sealing project process, rather. Because currently, the, the system, you know, you wait years to seal your record, and then there's a backlog. I have clients who I file the petitions in May, and they're still waiting to get those processed. And then the worst thing about the, the criminal record sealing process, and this is a nationwide dynamic. So a lot of states have enacted what's called clean slate legislation, which automates the process. So you don't have to file anything or figure anything out. And our Massachusetts law is incredibly complicated. And again, people have burdens. People have trauma when they, from just being incarcerated and particularly if they're disabled or have health issues. So I will be sending in a letter that has the bill numbers. And thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Madam Chair, you're muted.
Yep. Sorry. Thank you for the testimony. And I hope you can email us in written format also so we can have that. Next up is Claudia Trevor Wright.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Wonderful. Thank you to the commission for holding this forum and allowing me to speak. My name is Claudia Trevor Wright. I'm a resident of Natick, Massachusetts, and I have the privilege of leading the Connect for Success Initiative at the American Society for Emergency Contraception. This initiative is funded by the Institute for Women's Policy Research and seeks to increase community college students' access to sexual and reproductive healthcare. Growing disparities in access to sexual and reproductive healthcare across the US will negatively impact student enrollment, persistence, and degree completion. Unintended pregnancies in particular have tremendous potential to disrupt or derail college students' academic success and negatively impact their well-being. Evidence from the Institute for Women's Policy Research clearly shows that contraception positively impacts women's graduation rates, educational attainment, occupation earnings, and mortality. Delaying pregnancy and childbearing even for a short period can have profound impacts on education outcomes and economic well-being. And on-campus childcare is available at less than half of the US colleges and universities. And where available, there are often long waitlists due to high demand and limited capacity. Massachusetts, with the support of this commission, has led the nation in increasing access to emergency contraception. The recent standing order effectively mitigated cost and access barriers to the most effective forms of emergency contraception, addressing important inequities. But we all know there is more work to do. Several states, including Oregon, Maryland, and Illinois, have advanced equitable access to emergency contraception by either requiring or funding EC vending machine programs on college campuses. EC vending machines are available to students 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and are able to offer over-the-counter emergency contraception at significantly reduced costs. This model has been successfully deployed on over 100 campuses across the US on a voluntary basis and is already in place on many campuses in the Commonwealth. It is practical, it is feasible, it is cost-effective, and it is impactful. This model is particularly important as Massachusetts community colleges' access opens up to all residents. It remains to be seen how the demographic and health needs of community college students will change as a result of this opening up, but I have no doubt that the need for comprehensive contraceptive access will only grow. I urge the commission to incorporate into its legislative priorities either state funding or direction to institutions of higher education to provide EC vending machine access to students. And thank you all for your work and service.
Thank you so much for your testimony. All righty, thank you. On to our next is, ooh, Arliez Barboza. Arliez, am I saying it correctly? Arliez Barboza?
They are here. You see them in the room. And we can go back.
Yeah, we can go back to them. I was trying to find them in the screen. But how about Elizabeth Torrent?
You're still muted. There you go. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Elizabeth Torrent. I'm a resident of Fairhaven, Massachusetts, and I'm a, work for Health Imperatives, who, whose mission is to improve the health and well-being of individuals and families of low incomes or vulnerable populations in southeastern Mass. So that's our area where we serve. We serve about 20,000 people every year, most of whom are women. So we have, we have a lot to say. Every year, it gets harder to address the growing needs of women as healthcare costs and the cost of living explode. Most of our state contracts for services for low income are level-funded. In effect, they're worth less every year. And in our region is undersourced, under-resourced compared to other parts of the state. Moreover, eligibility for federal-funded healthcare cash, food and cash assistance is based on a federal poverty level and doesn't take into account the high cost of living in Massachusetts. So our population is, is really impacted differently than people who have the same, the same, the federal poverty level in, in states that are less expensive. Worsening health disparities drive numerous health hurdles facing women and girls in southeastern Massachusetts. It doesn't really matter what, what the issues are. It's all, it's driven by the health disparity. So be it, be it poverty, economic instability, lack of affordable housing, reproductive healthcare issues, LGBTQIA health and safety issues, sexual violence and food insecurity, which are a lot of the issues that we work on in this agency. Meanwhile, recent changes at the federal level pose many potential challenges, including funding cuts, program elimination, and decreases in health insurance coverage rates, to name just a few. Women with low incomes and many of whom are heads of families are falling further behind as the wealth gap increases. Most immigrants without legal status are only eligible, eligible for emergency or catastrophic, catastrophic healthcare. Therefore, significant numbers of women who are struggling to make ends meet are not, not eligible for assistance. Many low-income women do not qualify for or, or struggle to maintain healthcare, health insurance coverage, and many more can't access high-quality primary care. Insufficient resources dedicated to providing healthcare, food, and housing to low-income, income individuals, coupled with a scarcity of living wage jobs in many low-income areas, means residents, residents, women are trapped in a cycle of poverty with no escape. Low-income women and girls are particularly at risk, as someone else said, of poverty due to unantenic pregnancies. And although Massachusetts has low rates of unantenic And although Massachusetts has low rates of unantenic pregnancies, there are significant disparities across racial and ethnic lines. I'm not going to go into the homelessness and housing, you know, it's it's an all-time high. Every Massachusetts administration and legislature struggled with containing the cost of homelessness and within the framework of an annual budget cycle, which makes it really impossible to invest and impair necessary services to people who fall through the cracks of mainstream care systems of care. Uh-oh. Okay. I didn't get into my solutions, but I'll submit this testimony. I'll submit it. And we have a lot of like calls to action, so I'll submit it.
Go another minute or two for solutions, if you don't mind.
Okay. Okay. No, no particular order. Investigate health disparities along gender and racial lines to help determine solutions to improve outcomes for women. Address and invest in the social determinants of health and focus on prevention. Reexamine state budget priorities and invest in women who have not had equal access to meaningful opportunities by allocating funds based on need and priority of populations served. We believe there are service dollars in EOHS agencies that could be leveraged, although it's really difficult because they put RFARs out at different times. So there's no way to streamline and make it more effective. Ensure public funding reimbursement rates are in par with and operate like private insurance reimbursement. So that organizations that prioritize serving people with barriers to care are funded in a way that can truly increase access to racial justice and health equity. And finally, streamline business processes across DPH to decrease duplication and increase flexibility. So it's kind of like a systems, we have like a systems approach, so I'll submit.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Alrighty, and we look forward to that submission. Next is Soraya Dos Santos.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate you all for yet another opportunity to share our stories and to be able to continue to bring our voices, to bring our intention to a number of different issues that continue to perpetuate challenges, inequities, and overall systems of death in and around us in our communities. I am a mother. I am a sister. I'm a village child and facilitator here in the city of New Bedford through Sacred Burden Village. We are a maternal restoration village, bringing all things of sisterhood, healing our souls, liberating our souls and our spirit, and really giving us the opportunity to remember what it means to be villagers as a part of a village and how do we engage in a collective reckoning of remember reclaiming, revitalizing, and restoring so much of what has been robbed and stolen from us, especially by POC, birthing and pregnant individuals in and around the community of Greater New Bedford, but especially south coast and southeastern Massachusetts. And I come to you not just in my individual voice, because I never walk by myself. And I stand on the backs and shoulders of many sisters, of many brothers, of many individuals and families that, you know, sort of traverse the various things in and around them, their lives, and their families. And so one of the many issues that I would like to bring to the forefront is a concern and an ongoing issue that I really don't see the needle have shifted too much. And I say this with a lot of compassion, but I also say this with a lot of exhaustion, because we continue to speak of the same things. We continue to see a number of, you know, statistics, data points that continue to tell us we are not well. And we continuously navigate many different things that pose as threats to our ability to have thriving lives, especially for pregnant and birthed individuals. For you all, if you haven't been aware of the comprehensive maternal health bill that has been passed by our legislators and governor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are calling for really additional resources to come into our community. We are a community that continues to see a whole level of impoverishment, deprivation across the board. But we continue to see lack of resources as well. And so I'm urging the commissioner to take this yet again, because I've been here before, you know, just to continue to, to, really, the invitation is, could we all sit down together as a collective body of doing various work when it comes to women's issue, right? Because women's issue isn't just a women's issue, it's the human rights issues. And so how can we collectively come, resource one another, and how do we pull in the necessary resources that allows us all to do our collective work and purpose to be able to bring exactly what is needed to our lives and our community for thriving life? I thank you and looking forward for all that is to come.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you. Next, we have Judith Gangel. Judith Gangel, did I say it right?
I'm sorry I joined you late. I apologize for that. I had it posted on the wall in front of me. But the adult daughter of a very dear family friend was undergoing some very major woman-type surgery at a hospital where I am here in Ohio temporarily. And I was waiting for the call after her surgery to let me know that everything was okay. So I didn't want that to interrupt my appearance here. You can hear me okay, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have my video shut off. I look like hell. And so I think my voice will carry me well for what I wanted to say. There were a couple of things, and I don't know if any of them have been addressed. And I think I may pare it down to the number one priority. And that is the fact that, this is from personal experience. My husband passed away eight months ago. That's the reason I'm in Ohio. It's a long story, which I will synopsize to about two sentences. He was injured at work in 2019. It got worse. He had a closed skull, TBI, and it just progressed downward. We came here to spend time with our daughters and grandkids, the grandchildren being close to 30 or above. And so we wanted to come here for the winter of '22, '23, then go home. And he got so much worse that we never left here. He died here. He's now buried here. And I am still here because I had two crises of my own health that were life-threatening right before him dying. And we had just celebrated our 60th anniversary. So we were married 60 years, two months, and one day when he passed away. And I've had a lot of medical experiences in the recent couple of years particularly. So my number one priority that I believe needs to be addressed is this. We are, without any doubt, no matter who the government is run by or controlled by, however you want to view it, we are a mobile society. We're a mobile world. And one of the great things about Medicare, and I happen to be covered by original Medicare, one of the best things of that, especially in Massachusetts, is the no-brainer in way in which it was set up for supplements. Last, this current year, there were three plans. There still are three plans only. There were seven providers this year. I think there were something like 21 for next year. So it becomes a diversity, inclusion, and equity kind of healthcare. However, the fact that we all have those wonderfully minimal choices to give us everything without going through hell, putting it all together piecemeal, there is a downside to it. And it is something that is one of the things that I truly believe is so easy to fix. I'm well-known for being a problem finder and a solution offerer. And those solutions I have thought through in every case as being virtually simple, cost-efficient, time-efficient, and the best ones that can be used. So now to be specific, there is a part of supplement coverage that one can purchase. If you have original or red, white, and blue, or ABC or A and B Medicare, the various AKAs for it, but it's the original red, white, and blue card. You can purchase a supplement plan to go with it. It is a separate cost, but it is a supplement to Medicare A and B. So it's analogous to having an advantage plan, but it works totally differently. And I've come to discover, to my own detriment, that part of that supplement that is supposed to be universal and the way, in a couple of sentences, the way for everybody who may not have experienced that part of Medicare, to just give you a real quick summary in a couple of sentences. The way the supplement works is it has to be given by a business that has established themselves to be able to have a contract that is allowed by Medicare, by original Medicare, as a provider of that supplemental coverage. It is basically a supplement to A and B, in most cases B. And it provides costs, coverage for things that Medicare, original Medicare, does not cover. And I'm sure you've all been beaten to death in the television commercials in the last few weeks for all the companies that are providing everything for everybody. And it all sounds wonderful, but it isn't. When you have a supplement and you select the plan you want and the provider you want to buy it from, once you have it, that supplement is under contract to Medicare. And the supplement providers are bound to provide anything for which Medicare gives its approval. So no matter what your medical charges are, whether they are under Part A or Part B, if Medicare authorizes it, the supplement provider is bound to provide for you the coverage that they have. Now.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. I'm sorry, because you're off camera, you don't see the timer.
Oh, I didn't know there was one. Okay. Can you give me, can you give me a couple more minutes? Because this is where I'm just about to give you very, very quickly the problem, which is so major and absolutely needs to be taken care of. Is that all right?
I already let you go over a minute. So, and we're just trying to be, you know, cognizant of everyone's time.
If everybody agrees, this is a major fix for a major broken part of the system. And it affects everybody who has Medicare Original with a supplement.
So when you, so when you say a couple more minutes, does that mean less than a minute, less than two minutes, or five and 10? Because I have to be, I have to be.
Okay. Under, I'm sorry, under five minutes, it will be.
So that's, that's too much. If you can email it to us, we do share.
Well, then, can I, can I give it to you in a summary in one minute?
Summary in one minute.
Okay. The provider for the supplement then does business on durable medical equipment provision with vendors that sell those products that qualify as durable medical equipment, provided that the prescription is written in compliance with the way Medicare wants it. And Medicare approves that, that vendor has to provide it. However, many of the providers that sell you the supplement are not getting cooperation from those who sell, the vendors who sell those durable medical equipment items. They have what they call, and it's been here in Ohio and it's hit me, that they do not interact as providers because I live in a different jurisdictional district from where my coverage comes. This is universal. Yeah. And you know what? That's not so. The bottom line, they all have to provide it. And there are, there's information under Medicare Original, how, at least once a year anyway, every patient can go after that recovery of the money expended from the vendor, but the vendors don't have the right to refuse you. And I have been housebound because I needed durable medical equipment, which I was denied by the vendor, who then denied to be able to pay it, sell it to the supplement company. And my coverage for my supplement is through Tufts. And Tufts, you read your coverage, and they will not pay it. They won't sell it to the companies here that have the supplement contract with Medicare. So I couldn't get any of those things. It needs to be arranged, and this is the bottom line. Medicare needs to make sure that every vendor who does business with any of these supplement providers realizes they don't have an option not to provide that which is properly prescribed and approved by Medicare. Nobody, again, will ever have to go without a walker or a roller or a scooter or any, I can't even get the things I needed, and that was life-threatening in one case. So it needs to be fixed so that they understand their obligation. Once they get a contract with Medicare, the terms are set. They either abide by it or they're out of the mix and they don't get the patients. I'm sorry I was late and I'm sorry I ran over, but I hope that somebody will take that up. Or I will as soon as I'm back in Massachusetts.
So to be honest with you, I appreciate that. Thank you for the testimony. But that issue isn't on a national level, more than a local level. So, but we'll look at it. We'll, we'll, we'll do what we can.
Well, it is local. It is local. They're turning down the coverage for anybody that's not in this region. So that means people from Massachusetts like me, I still live in Massachusetts. I vote there. I have a home there. They won't give me my durable medical equipment because they said they don't work with this region. They don't have that option. So it is affecting everybody from any state that is not in this region. And that means everybody in Massachusetts. Even if you have a medical crisis and you're in another state and they don't want to supply you, you can be left on a deathbed because you can't get what you need, including inhalers and things like that.
Will you send your Caspianian ride for us?
Yes. So can you send that in to us too, please, Ms. Judy, so we can have?
Sure. I'll send you an email summarizing what it was. And the other things that I didn't address, and I'm sorry I didn't know that there was a time constraint specific. So my colleagues, thank you. I was an unsung heroine in 2012, and I haven't shut my mouth since, but I've been like.
We don't want you to. Thank you.
I'm 82, and I started doing this when I was 15 in more limited ways. But it's a long time. I've been doing stuff like this. And to my dying day, I will keep it up. When there's a problem, there's got to be a fix. And women are the ones to do it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your passion.
And thank you all. Thanks for doing this. MCSW always steps up to the plate.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
It's my honor to be part of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Stephanie Ellis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you to the commission for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Stephanie Ellis, and I reside in the town of Barnstable on Cape Cod. I'm going to give you a quick summary about the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program on Cape Cod that was disassembled. In August 2022, a group of SANE nurses for Cape Cod that provided 24/7 on-call, in-person services to Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital were notified by the director of the Massachusetts SANE Program that in-person certified sexual assault care by a certified and trained SANE nurse was being eliminated in November 2022. There was no clear explanation as to why, and there were, there was some chatter about the numbers being low, also that there were not enough nurses to cover the call. I reached out to the Cape delegation as well as others, which included both senators, all of our state reps, the district attorney's office, the chiefs of police across the entire Cape, and some local pediatricians. Very quickly, every person I spoke with, without exception, was in favor of keeping the in-person services. Our delegation had meetings with the Department of Public Health asking for a delay in eliminating this vital service to the citizens of Cape Cod. We actively recruited dozens of nurses interested in being trained. And there were actually two nurses currently in training at the time, specifically for Cape Cod. This issue had the entire delegation locked in on saving this program. Actually, our state representative made note that it was the first time he had ever seen such dedication to a single cause during his time as a state rep. The Department of Public Health's plan was to offer telehealth SANE services to sexual assault victims and eliminate the in-person. and eliminate the in-person forensic trained nurse. The way the tele same works is when a person reports a sexual assault, a same nurse is video called in on an iPad and she helps the emergency room nurse and walks her through the forensic evidence collection kit. This ER nurse is pulled from her very busy assignment and can only care for that one patient in the, in the interest of chain of custody of the evidence being collected. Each case can take on average from three to five hours. This practice poses a major staffing issue for the emergency departments at Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital, especially in the summer month. Cape Cod is the busiest ER in the state of Massachusetts. The pandemic took a toll on so much and the medical field was a frontline of all of this. Staffing shortages were and still are a national crisis. Travel nurses continue to fill the gaps in many hospitals. These nurses are not formally trained in Massachusetts forensic nursing and end up learning on the fly from a person on an iPad during a delicate situation. It's simply not ideal. Cape Cod Healthcare recognized this staffing issue and continued to appreciate the value of in-person forensic care. The medical care, the medical director signed off a group of nurses during a training and allowed this group of nurses to be available to cover sexual assault cases in the emergency departments in person. It's not a perfect plan and it, but it was something. I am one of those nurses. I work a full-time job as a nurse practitioner and like the rest of the group, we were rarely available when they needed us. Cape Cod Hospital had a very small budget for this and paying the nurses to be on-call and guarantee availability was just simply not an option. Cape Cod Healthcare should not take on the financial burden of trying to put together a program that neighboring communities have in place in-person sexual assault care for our citizens on Cape Cod. Telehealth does not cover pediatric cases. So if an emergent pediatric case is presented to the, to the ER, the busy ER nurse needs to complete the forensic evidence colle, uh, collection kit with no guidance from a certified nurse. Uh, this is a recipe, in my opinion, uh, for an unintentional mistakes, missing vital evidence, potential stress and re-traumatizing victims with inexperienced and fractured care. Telehealth is a medical modality that arose from the pandemic and it can be very useful at times. In this case, a trauma-informed certified sexual assault nurse is willing and able to provide in-person care on Cape Cod. Telehealth should and always should take a backseat. I thank you so much for your time and for your continued interest in this subject.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And, and we were actively involved in that. Thank you. And next is Ellie Martins. Ellie Martins.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Ellie. This is my first meeting at the Women's Fund South Coast. I'm unprepared. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about what happened to me because we're talking about medical issues. I'm going to preface this with saying that as a teenager, I was diagnosed with scoliosis, osteoarthritis, later rheumatoid arthritis. I've had fibromyalgia, lupus, which has affected my liver, primary biliary cirrhosis, my, my organs, basically. I'm a mess. I look pretty good from the outside, I think, considering. But I'm, I've gone through mental torture. I've gone through sexual abuse. I've been through abusive marriage. I've, I've had hell on, on, on high waters. But as that is like sounds, it's been that good. I mean, I've had a wonderful life. Now, because I am 75 years old, I have chosen, well, I've made a DNR years ago. I have my power of attorney. I'm, I'm a donator to Harvard Medical School. I've got everything written down. I had an infusion a few months ago, which left me with temporary paralysis. My organs started shutting down. Long story short, it was excruciatingly painful. I was on morphine. And because it was an infusion that worked opposite of what it should have done. And it's, it's an infusion, so it, it comes back, it releases itself every so many months. So, uh, for the third time, it released itself this past month. And of course I went through the same excruciating pain and insanity. And I, I had called my doctor to ask if I could get some pain from medication, uh, medication for pain. Can't get it unless you go into the office. While I was in too much pain and I couldn't move. So I, I, they, they asked me, what are you doing for the pain? And I said, well, I, I'm taking Tylenol, which is what I have. And because it affects my, the pain, when you, when I'm in a lot of pain, my blood pressure goes sky high. My heart starts palpitating. So I had taken six nitroglycerin pills and two squirts. And they, she went crazy. She said, oh my God, you can't do that. And I said, well, I've done it and I've survived the day. I said, I need something a little stronger than Tylenol. Can't you just call it in? No, I can't. She said, I want you to go to the hospital. I said, I'm not going to the hospital. I said, I, I've chosen if I'm going to die, I'm going to die at home. Okay, this is where I have my major problem. There is a HIPAA Act, but it doesn't seem to affect them when you're at home. They called 911 for me and sent the, uh, the EMTs over to bring me to the hospital. I said, I'm not going to the hospital. And of course, they don't always send an ambulance. They send four police officers and two crews of ambulances, drivers. And so because I didn't want to go, I said, I choose to die at home if this is going to be a heart attack. Because he said, you're having a, um, a, a, um, a heart incident. You know how they do that thing in. So I said, well, if it's a heart attack, I'm grateful. Hopefully it'll kill me and I'll be out of this insane, insane pain. So now he puts the doctor from St. Luke's on the hospital, on the line. And he's telling me, you're having a heart attack. You've got to come in. I said, I'm not coming in. So now, uh, he's trying to talk me into going to the hospital. And I said, if you're a cardiologist, you're putting me under more stress, get off the phone and leave me alone. And I said, I'm not talking to that man anymore. And so that was the end of that conversation. So now they are asking me if I'm suicidal. And I said, I'm not suicidal because I choose to be at home if this is going to kill me. I am suicidal. I said, I'm 75 years old. I said, our society is so bloody greedy. Everybody wants more life, more life. My life has been excruciatingly painful. I said, I've lived a good life when I've had, you know, the opportunity. I'm satisfied with my life. If this is going to kill me, let it be at home. But because I was like that, they, they, they were there for almost two hours saying that I, you know, I was, I was suicide. I said, I'm not suicidal. I'm not going to take. I mean, if I wanted to, I've got those pain patches that you put on for a week. I could have, I've got a stock, I would just put them all over my body if I wanted to kill myself. I said, I'm not, I don't want to kill myself. I just want to die at home if I'm forced to. And if my time is, but the bottom line is, we should have the right as seniors to not go to the hospital and not be told, you gotta go to the hospital. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Ms. Ellie and everyone on, online. I, I'm thank you and I have to leave you. I'm multitasking today. I have some American Legion stuff to do. Vice Chair of the Program Planning, Jean Fox, will take over from, for, for me from now and, and bring on the next testimonies. Thank you so much and I'll be back with you in a few minutes.
On behalf of seniors, this is Judy for one second more. I concur with her. They disrespect seniors who are still sharp and wanting to live and able to live. There's not enough home health. Here they have the hospice and then they call for the funeral chapel to come and get the body. Otherwise you make it through. Those are the options.
Thank you, Judy. I'm also a senior and I, and I absolutely respect what you're saying. It's a, that's a societal issue and I think that we as seniors need to make sure that we speak up when these things happen and will continue to do so. So we just heard from two people who have experienced a certain elder bias that's most definitely out there. So I appreciate everyone's input on that. And I would like to see now if Shawnee Burke is available to testify. Shawnee?
Yes, that's you.
Hi, my name is Shawnee and I'm from the New Bedford area. And I agree with what Ellie just said and I have issues with that myself, you know. I'm afraid sometimes to even say anything because right away, really a red flag goes up. Say you fall, right away there's a red flag that goes up. Really, like there's a lot of things like, and you're almost afraid to say anything because you don't know what they're going to do. And I've been through a lot myself. I had, um, almost died. I had my intestine burst. I was poisoned. And I ended up with a colostomy bag and now I have a lot of scar tissue and a lot of pain here and a lot of issues with my abdomen. And I can't, just can't seem to get a doctor, the doctors to take care of me and fix it for me. I'm struggling with that right now. And also, I'd like to be able to pick the doctors I want in the hospital. I want to get surgeries on and I just can't seem to get to what I want. I want to go to Mass General in Brigham and they keep telling me I got to go to Boston City Hospital. I'm not going there. I've been through too much. I've been on my deathbed. Okay. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not doing it. Nobody's going to cut me up again until I know that they're going to do it right. And only, I only have faith in Boston and I think I should have the right to choose what I want as a woman and it's my body. And I should be able to choose it instead of going through all this. I've been through enough already. And it's just too much already. In fact, I'm telling these girls here that I don't know how much more I can take. I give up and I don't get nothing done. I need some help. That's why I'm here. This is my first meeting and I'm going to come again.
We're, and we're very glad that you were able to join us this evening and I'm sorry that you've been through such difficult times. You know, it speaks to why we're having this hearing tonight. Access to appropriate healthcare, your choices about where you want to go, not being, not having folks insist you be transported to a hospital in an ambulance because you don't want to go in. All of these things, we're recording and we will keep in mind. And I can't tell you what to do, but it sounds to me like you're doing the right things by suggesting, I really prefer to go here. I've been through enough. This is my choice, things of that nature. So thank you so much. I'm really grateful that you were able to join us and share your, your story. Marjorie Bernado Alexandra.
Good afternoon.
There you are. Good afternoon. Hi.
I'm actually here in various capacities, but number one, I am here as a 25 years experience as a community and criminal justice research analyst. And I do a lot of studies involving the community as well as women. But also here as a woman of color who has gone through this issue that I'm about to mention and have to deal with healthcare. My number one concern right now is actually something I experienced 24 years ago. And as of now, with other people I know, there hasn't been any changes. And that is postpartum. As I look at the maternal health bill, I actually would like to see more. And I'm calling upon Sane to work with the doctors and work with the lawmakers and work with DPH that there is a program, um, some type of follow-up that comes through after people deliver. Because a lot of women suffer from postpartum. And as a woman of color, there is one thing that I see a lot. It's the whole idea of making it as if women of color are aggressive and not really viewing the issue that's going on with postpartum. So it is neglect and it is something that says, you know, you can take care of it. And there is that belief of being strong. So that is an issue. And like I said, um, and 24 years ago, I had postpartum with my first child. And I have to admit, I receive the worst medical service possible. And currently I have a friend of mine who just went or who is going through postpartum right now. And the answer she's getting and the response she's getting is similar as mine. So that is something I would like us to work on. I also, as a researcher, have been doing a lot of studies on criminal justice. And I collected data from 19, from 1995 to present and looking at homicide. And if you guys start looking at studies on homicide and the family, not outsiders and the family, you will see how high the number of women are when it comes to homicide and their children. But if you look at the data, you will see that it's different than male prosecutors or male offenders. The narrative is a lot of these women are suffering with postpartum. So I really, really, really would like to see something like this, that we start looking at it, we start thinking about it. Thank you. Thank you, MCSW.
Thank you. Two very important topics there. Very much appreciated. Certainly the, the postpartum is something we've talked about. And you're right, you probably need to do more on it out there. It's, it's not a new thing. But it is something that tends to be, it's a can we tend to kick down the road or others have. So thank you for that and, and the data that you, I wondered if you could share some of that data with us, Marjorie? That would be really wonderful too, on the homicide and the family information. Would be super. I, I have to defer to staff. Is there anyone else on the list? Those are the last two names I had. Oh, thank you, Marjorie. If not, is there anyone else who would like to say something in this space?
If I could, if nobody else wants to, I would just, yeah. Well, I never run out of ideas and my husband was in the same situation with the care not being what it should be. But I will say this. My care for over 20 years was at Mass General till I came here, had the health crises here and had to get doctors here. It is the same basic problem, except it's much worse here. Doctors here, when they book follow-up appointments, they get booked for 20 minutes. That's it. I had to go see a doctor, a cardiologist a couple of weeks ago, who was a partner of the one I had originally seen. And I had never seen this doctor. I wasn't in the office 10 minutes when he was watching his, looking at his watch, telling me that he was almost out of time. Wanted to know if I would be open to having a stent put in. Now I'm very well versed in medicine pharmacology and biotech. I said, no, I'm not interested in a stent. I don't need one. And I gave him all the information why. And yet the primary care doctor I had had here unfortunately.
Oh, we are at time. Oh, thank you so much. Um, is there anyone else? Thank you for that follow-up. Is there anyone else who would like to say something for us?
Ms. Fox, it looks like we have Julie.
Julie.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm a nurse at Cape Cod Hospital and I just was here regarding the same nurse issue. I come with a little bit different perspective. I've been an emergency room nurse at Cape Cod Hospital for almost 20 years. And the lack of same nurses is horrible for us. To have to, your five or six other patients to go into a room for potentially anywhere from three to five hours with that one patient. You know, it's, it's, it's a terrible situation. It leaves the department short-staffed. And you're going in there with minimal experience or minimal training. You're taking in a tablet essentially to tell you how to take care of this patient. I also come into this with the, the history of having, I have five daughters. One of my own daughters was sexually assaulted and I had to bring her in for a rape kit. And I will say that I can't imagine, having done that with my 18-year-old child, she was raped on a college campus. And I had to bring her in. I can't imagine doing that and having a tablet telling this person how to do this evidence collection that could potentially go to court to be the, the maker. how to do this evidence collection that could potentially go to court to be the make or break of a case convicting this person who had assaulted her. I'm grateful that it happened when we had sane nurses at our hospital, but I can't imagine a young woman having to come in, or any woman, male, coming into that situation. I don't understand why it's changed here on the Cape, but I just needed to voice my own piece of it, coming from two perspectives, my personal and the fact that I'm an emergency room nurse who could be required to do these kits if I was there and it's one of my patients. I just, we need to fix that here on Cape.
Thank you so much. Yeah, the two perspectives, definitely, definitely palpable. Also, as you heard our chairwoman say earlier, we really did try to work hard to push for Sane. We do believe in its mission and goals and I'm not even sure why we went the way we did, but I think it's something we need to all continue to pursue. It's definitely not the ideal and you can say staffing shortages, you can say whatever you want, but a tablet for a vulnerable information, a vulnerable person, when you've got a queue of people outside that are still waiting for treatment as well, it's untenable. So thank you. I really appreciate that, Julie. I see Lynn, you have your hand up?
I do. Very quickly, I just want to say, because I'm on the chair of the Cape Cod and Islands Commission, if we can get re-engaged in the sane struggle, I think we would be very happy to, you know, re-energize that. I remember signing a petition or a letter or something. This has been a couple of years about that and it was horrifying to me that why would you come in and even report an assault if you thought you were just, you didn't know what was gonna happen to you, you know, and what happened to you would not necessarily, you know, the most encouraging kind of situation, not to diminish what the nurses do, but it's really rough. The other thing is, I know we have, in the past year, our commission has supported the doula bill. And to me, that was like really just a vital thing because in the whole postpartum struggle that people have, that's where doulas can be very useful. And I really hope that that is gonna get funded as being covered by insurance. My last thing is, I think that there's, I worry about in the future with the new administration of them modifying the Affordable Care Act to take away the coverage for twenty, for people up to twenty-six. And I worry about, you know, people's reproductive choices. And I just hope we have to really keep our eyes on that because I know people who, with pre-existing conditions, they're in college and they have, they're under parents' insurance and they may end up losing that, that ability. Where can we find a way to help fill that gap? And that's it. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. And thank you, Will. Definitely look at the sane connection. And certainly, the doula bill is top of mind as well. I see Aleah Bannister Beatty. I'm probably saying that very badly.
No, you're actually saying it. Okay, thank you very much. My name is, my name is Aleah Bannister Beatty. I am the VP of Government Relations and External Affairs and Chief Diversity Officer for Wayside Youth and Family.
No. I think we might have lost Aleah. Oh, no. Yeah, I think we lost her. Oh, that's unfortunate. Maybe she'll be able to get back in. Is there anyone else?
Well, I just want to say, if nobody else is gonna speak, I want us all to give a round of applause to everybody in MCSW who was part of thinking up this hearing and putting it together and getting the word out. Because I will keep going no matter what. You can tell. You cannot shut me up. But a lot of people are a little nervous about trying to speak up too much. I'm well-known for it. I've been an elected official and in government for fifty-three years. So I've been at the State House more than some of the representatives have been. And I'm known there, so they kind of tend to listen when I speak. But I think, you know, there is an old saying, united we stand, divided we fall. Well, we are united as of today in more than we ever were. And I think if we keep this ball rolling, we will knock all the pins down that stand in our way and it will be one hell of a strike for women.
Thank you so much. Susan Lee, I know you.
Hi, Jean. How are you?
Great to see you.
Down here in Bristol County. So I just wanted to bring up one thing that no one has mentioned yet tonight. And I wanted to make sure that it was in your notes. I'm Susan Lee from New Bedford. And here in New Bedford, and I think in most of southeastern Massachusetts, there is very poor access to in-clinic abortion services. So thanks to health imperatives, we do have medication abortion services. But there's no hospital in southeastern Massachusetts offering in-clinic surgical abortion services. So women have to go to Boston, they have to go to Attleboro, they have to go to Providence. And that's a long way to go, especially if someone doesn't have a car. So I hope you'll just put that on your list, that we need to have better access to in-clinic services here. If not, in the hospitals that exist, maybe a freestanding clinic, you know, there could be funding for a freestanding clinic to do that. So thanks very much.
Well, thank you. And you're right. I remember when the last one went offline. That is a problem in the region. And we will soon have better transportation, but the transportation issue certainly is at the forefront of that for a lot of the women in our region, also in Bristol County here. Is there anyone else? Thank you, Susan.
We have Aleah. Aleah's back.
My apologies. My apologies, I'm en route, but I was just gonna say that I reiterate everything that was stated. But I just want to, you know, encourage, I guess, the commission and ask and request that we lean to the legislators to, you know, just suggest that they continue to focus on SDOH overall, especially given the new administration that's coming in, because I definitely can see where there may be some issues or changes in policy around post-equity and especially for Black and Brown communities. And I think it will be vital for us to really continue to stay focused on that. Because as we know, as somebody had mentioned, Basia Rhea, I think that was her name, mentioned, talking about postpartum depression. It is substantially higher within Black and Brown communities. I originally am from Illinois and served in Illinois government for quite some time. We made a lot of focus, made a lot of traction in really ensuring that we were focused on postpartum depression and even social determinants of health, because we recognize and realize that that's something that is still, something that we need to continue to focus on and have laser focus on. But even now, given that we are coming into a new administration, I'm sure there will be a lot of changes around healthcare, around housing, essentially around all things that impact both communities. So thank you.
No, thank you. And what you're saying is absolutely true. We're in for a time of change. And I think we've all realized that healthcare in the United States, the quality and availability has been an issue for a number of years and doesn't seem to be getting much better, which is why hearing from all of you is so critically important for us to be able to take up to the State House so we can make sure that we continue to support women and particularly women of color, maternal health, all of those things are so critically important. I'm really glad you got back on, Aleah. Anyone?
Very much for the opportunities.
Very happy you were.
I urge you to take the final report that you issue and make sure you send a copy to every senator and every rep at the State House. And get an acknowledgement from them that they have seen it and read it.
We'll make sure that they see it. We certainly will. Anyone else that I can't see? No? Well, thank you for everyone who has submitted testimony and thank you for everyone in attendance. This is really important. I will tell you that this healthcare issue has been very close to me for a long time as I've had my own personal issues and not just as a senior citizen, but even before. And just that I've noticed how we've made healthcare a business, so we're consumers rather than patients in many cases. And that's disturbing to me personally. That's just me speaking as to me. So for some closing remarks, if I may, I'd like to turn this over to Commissioner Tanisha Arena.
Thanks, Jean. And thank you to everyone who joined us this evening. The issues that we face are multiple, but together, we can tackle anything. And if you haven't already, we invite you to share your testimony with us in writing to inform our legislative priorities and future data reports on these crucial issues. Also, we value your input and we'd be grateful if you would take our brief exit survey. You can scan the QR code upon leaving or you can click the link in the chat or follow up with an email. We definitely want to hear from you. And finally, we invite you to stay plugged into the MCSW. You can join our newsletter, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram or LinkedIn, or join us for any of our upcoming events. So be sure to save the date for our Girls Empowerment Initiative and Advocacy Day in the spring of 2025 and Wednesday, February twenty-six, 2025, our virtual public hearing on women of color. Once again, thank you for joining us.
With that, we wish everyone a good evening and a happy Thanksgiving.